All right, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladona, your microphone's not on.
Steve Morrison.
Here.
Mark McHolly.
Here.
Nick Hansen. Joe Martin.
Yes.
Pat Clinton. Tom Siegel.
Here.
Karen Holland. Here. Ladona Pyle.
Here.
Kyle Smalley.
Good evening, uh, need approval, need agenda.
I'll make that motion, approval, I do get this, no one has any question.
I'll second it. There are motion by Pat, seconded by Joe for approval of tonight's agenda, all in favor? Unanimous. Uh, approve the minutes of the November 12th, 2025 meeting.
There's no questions, I mean.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mark, seconded by Ladona for approval of the minutes of the November 12th, 2025 meeting, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, approval of appropriation ordinance 1899.
There's no questions, don't make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Tom, seconded by Pat for approval of appropriation ordinance 1899, all in favor? Unanimous. There's been so some comments. Seeing nobody come forward, so the comments are closed. Ordinance 2025-12, rezoning of 5002 Parkview Drive.
Months ago, the mayor and I were approached by Jared Pyle, representing Red Star Capital Investments. Um, they want to, uh, put a commercial-type building, a retail strip mall-type of, um, business in, sorry. Put up on the overhead. Um, basically, we're, I don't know if you know, all know where Jared Pyle's mom lived, Kay, there on the highway at, uh, Parkview and Harris, but they would demo the house and that would be where the, the new strip mall would be. So, on this map, Parkview Drive is at the top, so that's north, so they have to improve the entrance off the highway, um, with Kay dot approval, and then have a second entrance over there on the, on the other side over here.
Was that the Harris?
Off of Harris, yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, that's, it's hard to say.
It went through planning and zoning.
It went through planning and zoning, um, all property owners within 200 feet were notified, nobody attended the meeting, nobody had any comments. So it was, it was approved unanimously.
Counsel, anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Pretty good, I can't even imagine. I'll make the motion, approve, uh, ordinance 25-12.
I'll second it. Got a motion by Mark, seconded by Tom to approve ordinance 25-12, rezoning 5002 Parkview Drive, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, need approval of a replat property located off of 590th Avenue near Hunter's Creek.
Uh, so east of Hunter's Creek, so this is, uh, 590 down here that runs east and west, Capaldo, off to the southwest over here. Um, these are the cul-de-sacs for Hunter's Creek, um, on this left side over here. Uh, Nextera Energy had purchased this property, uh, with the intent of creating an environmental easement, um, for the most part of it. Uh, this section down here at the bottom, that's shaded, and then this would all be environmental easement, uh, with the specific purpose of protecting the endangered broadhead skink that is along Cow Creek there. Uh, this was a little bit more complicated because part of it lies in Frontenac and part of it lies in the county. This is our city limits right here, so a big portion of this is in Crawford County, so it'd have to go through their planning and zoning as well. Uh, normally a replat would just require administrative action, in this case, the, pretty much the entire area is in a floodplain, so it required, uh, council, or, uh, required planning and zoning approval. Did that not pop up? Just trying to pull up a zo-, a flood zone map. There we go. Uh, this is the area in question right here, so. Probably 90% of it is.
Who are they?
Nextera. They're just, uh, they're a large energy company, I'm.
You mean like electric?
Like electric transmission, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and like I said, normally it require administrative action, we could just approve a plat like this. It lies in the floodzone, it, so it did require planning and zoning. It also did not require that we notify property owners within 200 feet or 1,000 feet on the edge. We did so anyway, just because you hear an energy company talking about, you know, doing something with property around here, we wanted to make sure there wasn't any question as to what was going on. This is not a, says nothing to do with solar, wind, anything at all, this is purely a environmental easement with the, um, with two. Hopefully that comes back up. It did not.
So how, I, I understand endangered means there's X amount. So there, that means there will be no this, that, or the other, they just want to keep it for the broadhead skink species?
Yes, and environmental easement is, it's pretty much a permanent easement. It's a, it's a recognized area that can have no development, you can't do anything with it whatsoever.
Okay, and it's all in floodplain?
And it's all in floodplain, there are these two pieces right here, uh, this spot here, and then this funny-shaped one up there, which is not in the environmental easement, those are properties that they intend to sell, uh, most likely to hunters or, or.
Farmers.
Hunters or farmers, the front piece is all, is all farmland up front, and then the back part is all trees.
On our map, John, is parcel two the county or is it the city?
Uh, parcel two. Let me pull up. Parcel two is in the county.
Okay, and is there a? A parcel one?
Uh, parcel one is the very, is the very top one.
And it is in county?
It's in the county, yes.
That line just south of parcel two, that's our.
So three, four, five, they're in our area.
Right, and, and this skinny one here is just an access, and it, it runs all the way up here, it's just a, an access easement for the property, so it's not landlocked in the rear out there.
Were, were all the owners in Hunter's Creek notified?
Not all of them, just the ones that were within the, within this area right here, the, what's the, what's the first one? I'm not sure which is which.
Barbara's the first.
Barbara's the first one.
So is it the information that the county has about it, or that this company has, is it public knowledge, so if those residents wanted to find out more, they could?
Um, yeah.
They can.
Yeah.
I mean, if they weren't notified and they hear, went, get wind of it.
Many problems with that out there with the roads.
And like I said, we published in the paper, we, we went above and beyond, we notified, like we would in normal planning and zoning, nobody showed up, nobody had any comments. Planning and zoning unanimously approved it. Right, and it stays, it stays agriculture, so it's all zone agriculture, if somebody want to do something, they'd have to come and have it rezoned anyway.
It's just, it's just weird that they buy it, but don't do anything with it. Well, it's for the.
It's to preserve the nature. It's to preserve the nature.
Yeah, it's PETA, you know.
I don't know this for sure, it'd be my guess, they probably do enough other electrical stuff or lines or something like that, they probably have a set of land that they set aside to give. I don't know that for sure, but that would be my guess, that's the reason they would do it.
It's just weird.
Yeah, make, make, make kind of feel good thing.
There are a lot of times though, if they develop an area where there's an endangered species, to mitigate that, they have to buy property. And have another property available.
Oh, kind of almost forced.
Yeah. You have to buy other one. Have other land that's not going to be touched by it.
I just, I just don't understand why they even did it. What would be advantage to that? I don't see any advantage to it.
So they bought it, right? They own all of it?
They own all of it, and I don't understand why they even subdivided it.
Well, I think it was already divided, right? It was already.
No, it was, it was one big piece.
And they, so they cut it up and then said, hey, we want to do a.
Yeah, so, so that, so that curvy line on the left, that's, that's where Cow Creek runs, it follows the, it follows the creek exactly. So all this, all this environmental easement is right here along the Cow Creek, this piece here is, is farmland that they intend to sell. That piece up there is, is just a wooded area, but it's on the other side of the creek.
So they could do some parcel four eventually.
Yes.
But they'd have to go through a lot of planning and zoning.
Correct.
And the rest I bet we don't have control of.
Right. Rest of it's.
Currently what they're asking for is they're basically the environmental, and then they got agriculture and agriculture or farming, and that's all they can do on there currently without coming back to force.
Right.
Do you have one question?
So we, we just need approval of the plat and the dedication of the easement.
Well, the zoning board approved it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a skink on you or something?
No, that's, that's Ladona Dangerous side.
I just don't quite understand. There's some, there's some.
Well, I mean, they're, they're not building. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Mark, seconded by Karen, uh, for approval of the replat property located at 590th Avenue, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, ordinance 25, or 2025-13, 160 sewer extension.
I'll turn it over to Matt here.
I'm gonna take over for this one. Uh, so this is the 160 project that we've been working on essentially since, uh, Harold came in, um, we communicated with some of the property owners and acquired signatures. For a number of the easements, the last four properties are still the ones that we don't have signatures for. Um, we had one of them come to City Hall and speak with John, um, after we sent out our first offer letter, but then when we sent the second one, they didn't come back and didn't get any response, um, because of the length of the project, and we knew there was going to be need for at least one property that we have to go to court on, um, that's why we're doing the ordinance now. My hope is that once the ordinance is passed, and this is the first step I need to get us into the courtroom, um, I show the court that this has been passed. Um, my hope is that once the ordinance is passed and I put together a packet similar to what I did for the McKay Street easements, we'll collect signatures just like we did on the McKay Street one, except for that one or two property owners that I think are just gonna have us go through the process.
But you didn't get any signatures, even the people that know that they need to have this?
We've, we've collected three signatures.
Okay.
These are the last four.
Gotcha. Ladona, have you?
No, I, no, I know who they are, I mean.
No, no, I'm not asking that, I just didn't know if you had, you know, a friend or neighbor across the street, you know.
We did go ahead and, uh, hire a general appraiser who did appraise all of the easements, so we have a cash value on them, which is what we paid out to the ones that, that, uh, signed the easement. Um, the next ones, you know, if, if it goes to court, we're pretty confident that that's going to be the amount that the court agrees to, I mean, it's a general appraisal. They, they specialize in this kind of appraisal.
100?
Uh, yeah, so essentially that court process. Judge is going to grant us the easements right away because we have the power of eminent domain, and then the only discussion is going to be the monetary value owed to the property owners because of the taking. Um, and that's where the appraisers that we come in should cover that, there shouldn't be anything else.
Because of the easement, not the taking, we're not taking. Who we are?
The easement is, is a property interest that we are taking, yes.
But, but they, they don't lose their property.
They don't lose their property. We gain an interest in their property for that easement.
Yeah, we don't, we don't take, we don't take ownership of the property, but we do, we do remove the, the use of that property.
But legally speaking, Joe, it is still a taking.
I thought we paid out the 204, we did not?
No, that's, that's Cherry.
That's Pam Cherry.
So Cherry, Cherry we don't have, Shetley we don't have, we have Tim Harrells.
We, so we wrote all the checks, we're holding them in our safe for them to come up and pick them up, and they have not picked them up.
So we have Harrells, we don't have Alexander's, and we don't have Mozer's.
I think Alexander was the one that came to City Hall.
Cherries are okay?
No.
I was gonna say, let her go away. Uh, what, you need a motion like this, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a motion for, uh, ordinance 2025-13, 160 sewer extension.
I'll make that one. I'll second it.
Got a motion by Ladona, seconded by Joe for ordinance 2025-13, 160 sewer easement, exten-, extension easements, I'm sorry, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, resolution number 2025-22, street closing for Christmas lighting ceremony.
Uh, you know, we closed the street for the, for the event that Paul Keyes had, and then also for the, the library ribbon cutting, and this is just for the Christmas lighting downtown, um, next Sunday, Sunday, Thanksgiving.
Do you want to make a motion to approve this every year for the next 99 years? Is it Monday?
It's Sunday.
Sunday, okay. I'll make a motion too, please.
Got a motion by Mark, seconded by Pat for resolution number 2025-22, street closing for a Christmas lighting ceremony, all in favor? Unanimous.
Make sure and attend, we have a good setup for Christmas lighting.
Uh, old business, Mark?
Come here.
Joe?
It doesn't have to be, not within the, are we gonna, we're in the, uh, I know we're working on ordinance for the amount of cars that people have and where they are, there's, it's not so much the ones that are in garages, but we got it in front yards and, and. Working, I, you know, I have, it's been a while since I heard that those things are still, they're down on Cypress and on, there's some on Ditman, or not Ditman, um.
Dobking.
Oh, they're, they're.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, there's a couple times where there's so many in the driveway in the yard that, um, Dobking, they're working on the road, and that's a, that's not real wide anyway.
Is that the one right off McKay?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. We, we, we cleaned that up one time, early spring, summer, so must have collected it again.
That seemed direct most of it.
Yeah, okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, Pat?
No.
Tom?
No.
Karen?
Night.
Ladona?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something to all the councils, I questioned, you know, what the mayor has done without our approval, and, and I want to clarify why I'm questioning it. I think it's our responsibility to know, because in the past, and Mark and Pat, you know where we're going. In the past, we had a mayor that signed a contract with an employee without council approval.
The mayor didn't, the administrator did.
No, the mayor did.
The mayor did?
Yes.
The mayor did.
Oh.
So, so that's why, that's why I'm so, I want it, I want it upfront, and I want to know what's going on, because we got ourselves into trouble before financially, and then we end up paying off people when there's contracts that we didn't, the council did not vote on, I mean, it's not a commitment.
Can that be illegal? Matt, can that be illegal contract?
The mayor cannot bind the city in contract, I.
But it happened, John.
But I think, but I think that in the past, that, that authority had been given to the city manager because one of the, help me out, and not James giving me that look, but.
I'm just trying to.
When we got on, one of the things we did was to pass an ordinance that brought hiring, all the hiring back to the council as the final vote.
Right.
That was one of the first things that I remember doing.
It wasn't a hiring, it was a special contract made over severance pay.
But, because one of the things that, that I remembered was, because I, I'm going, wait a second, we don't, you know, a lot of times it's a ceremonial vote, you know, we, we trust them to bring us the right person, but we still vote on it, and I vote on it so you're not hiring somebody or approving like a contract.
Right.
But I think some of that had been given to the city administrator.
That's where I'm coming from.
Your mistake, actually. Well, I can tell you, I can tell you, we voted on bringing that back when I got on the count. Absolutely, absolutely.
But yeah, so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
No, I know, it's not a shame.
I think anything that happens, we, we need to be aware of, because we weren't aware of it, and we were caught off guard, and I don't like surprises like that. So I'm not trying to go after Steve, I'm just trying to protect our city council, because we're, we're the bottom, I mean, it stops here.
And I pretty much appreciate that clarification, I really, really do, and one thing I will say is I will, I will go above and beyond, not to blind, but that's one of the first things I do anytime I meet with anybody, is say, there's, there's a group of aid officers, I said, if you can guess what they're going to do, I need you to sit in my seat, because I can't guess what they're going to do.
That's right.
So, that's the first thing I tell them, but I do tell most of them, if, if there's something, something to bring forward, I'll bring it forward. Most of the time when I meet with people, it's no more than just wanting to have an entrance into the city, that's most of the time what it is. Uh, I, I, I used to get excited, you heard, you know, with somebody to reach out to me, and I think, oh, this is gonna be great, and then they'd reach out to me and they just wanted to meet somebody in the city.
In regards to that, if someone wants to meet with you, you know, if they're reaching out to John, and he's sitting, like, I'm fine with that.
I am too.
I, well, I don't know which one you're hitting, because.
You mean, it's a lot of, it's more than one representation.
I, I'm not saying there is. Uh, you know, just remember, right?
Yeah.
Whether it's somewhat, it's never somewhat.
Yeah, and, and I get that, I, I understand what you guys are saying.
But no, no, I, I appreciate everything you've done.
Yeah.
I'm not. I'm not 207. Some of those people don't want to ever know.
That's true, but I'm saying, still, Nicky wants to know that too, so I just want.
I think he does too.
Cover.
I think he does too.
I, I do appreciate, I understand where you're coming from on that, thank you very much. All right, do you have anything else, Ladona?
No.
John, city minister, your report?
I want to talk about wastewater some more, uh, last two council memos, I've talked about the funding for a wastewater treatment plant, and you have some of the figures I put forward as to some funding strategies, and we've been talking about this for years. This wastewater project goes back, you know, before me, before 2019, so, um, we've definitely been working on this long enough. Uh, we did have a meeting with KDHE today, they requested a meeting, they wanted the mayor to attend, some city council members, so Joe and Ladona, the mayor, myself, Troy, Jamie, um, and Matt, uh, just attended a, a video conference with KDHE. I think the goal of that was just to make sure that the city council is completely aware of, of the scope of the project, how much money we need, and the conversation they've had about how we're going to fund that. We, it was almost a year ago now that we were considering USDA funding, because the USDA had 40-year loans for wastewater, and there was loan forgiveness as well, quite a bit in fact, with the, uh, cutbacks of the federal government, that went away, there were, there were no longer any, any grants, and it was going to be nearly impossible to get USDA funding. So, uh, early this year, we focused on, we're just gonna have to get a, a loan from KDHE, it's called an SRF loan. And the good news is KDHE has extended their terms, they used to only do 20-year loans, they will do, they will do 30-year loans now, which will, you know, it just costs more interest, but it helps us because we're way behind on, on what we need to, to fund the $21 million sewer plant. I don't know if any of you others want to jump in on what your kind of takeaway from the, from the meeting today with KDHE?
Well, I just took away that they want, they want our commitment, and we need to let them know, and soon, before the end of the year, how we're going to fund their loan. Are we going to do that with sewer rate increase, or are we going to do that with property tax, I mean, not property tax, with a sales tax increase? We have to let them know, and we, in writing, is my understanding, what we're going to do.
I see.
Because we are, uh, according to them, in, out of compliance, because they're past our date.
Yeah, that's because of them. Yeah.
I understand, they don't care.
Well, and I understand, but this thing was what, 8 million when it started?
No.
Eight, nine million?
10 to 12. Yeah, 12.
Okay, well, yeah, forgive me.
But that was on. But that was on our lagoons.
And, and I understand that, but it has more than doubled, because we're waiting six months, eight months.
Yes.
So, Matt, I don't know what you know, young man, and I know it's KDHE. Well, hey, like, if they want to say we're out of compliance, then we are not.
They, they aren't pushing that, they're working with us as long as we give them a timeline.
But you just said that we're out of.
They, they told us. We are.
So, so, so on, on paper, we're out of compliance, we were supposed to have plans and specs to them by August, we didn't, they understand why. So, you know, their, their computer system was updated to say Frontenac needs more time, but we didn't actually sign documents that said that we need more time.
And I, that's all one good.
Yeah.
But this is, like, if, if they're pushing for the end of the year, I, okay, give us eight months for our water review. And I understand it does more complacency, however, I, I, I'm sorry, that just hit a nerve, because it's been going on for six years, and we've been keeping this can, and now we're being told we're out of compliance, and it's more than doubled due to the COVID, the this, the that, right? It was a $10 million project, and now.
We look, I think, we went out during the conversation that the council has been, has operated on information that we've had and voted in a timely fashion.
Right.
And that some of the delays came from up there, and some of the delays came from Sugar Creek. But that we have been on, and, I mean, it's, it's a little discombobulated when you sit through it, and they, they started with a history and a quote regional water plant that we quickly, we quickly got that, I think, John, interrupt me, but, but, because, and I'll just say this, just because I keep want to, is, I don't know how a regional plant can be owned by another city and be considered a regional.
Right.
I, I wouldn't share, you know what I mean, I don't blame them for wanting to go, hey, you didn't own, you're going to pay us, blah, blah, blah. So that's, that to me, that's not even.
Sure, shares, but it comes, it comes back to, we need something on paper.
We can get, I think, through Kramer, who, who I think got the message today that they need to get in a hurry, there's nothing there that they can't do. Yeah, and it's just going to be, before, they're going to have to, my take on it, and you guys correct me, is, they're going to have to approve, they want to approve how we fund it.
That's right.
John, I, like, we're not going to be, you know.
I'm not worried about that.
Did you?
They won't work for us.
These people. They could be in setting sewer rates and stuff like that.
Right, it's going to be an issue, and we knew that.
But I think they're going to want to have some say in, like, even how much some of that is.
So where it sits, where it sits right now is Kramer has submitted updated cost estimates to the state, so they have those, they have 30 days to put together a finance plan for us, so they will look at it, they'll, they'll look at affordability, they'll check rates, and they'll let us know, this is your anticipated, um, payment, and if you're going to do it by sewer rates only, this is what your rate should be.
And they have 30 days.
They have 30 days.
How many waivers do they have to make that 90 days, 180, right? And it's rhetorical, you know where I'm going with that.
A week out.
If, if they can help us, that's great, I don't have a problem figuring that out, right? It's, it's going to be uncomfortable, but we knew that coming in.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, what I have a problem with is being out of compliance, being told that we're not doing what we need to do, and I'll let that go.
All right.
Take that, take that.
I, I, I just, I hope that when we have the next meeting, right, we can come up with something.
True. We need to, because.
Well, yeah, but that's.
Now we're going to find answers.
John and Jamie, Matt, they'll figure that out, I don't have a problem with that, I, I just, when, when I'm told that, like, we're being proactive, or what productive is reactivity that we're not complying.
So we're to meet, we're going to meet with Kramer's, they want us to meet with Kramer's by the end of the year, and then we need to have an answer back to them by the end of January, back to KDHE.
Did you? I'll, I'll leave that live, but I, I appreciate the information, guys, I just.
In the long run, we'll lose. In the long run, we'll lose.
Yes, no, no, that helps, and I appreciate it.
For those on the call today, did you guys take it that what we decide is set in stone, or say we had something else come down the line, we could fund it through that means too?
Yeah.
What, what did you guys? I, I, I think, what I heard is they just wanted us to have a plan.
Yeah.
It wasn't necessarily set in stone binding, but we had to have a.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be rates specifically, we can put tax money towards it, um, whatever means that we can. Um, they just want to make sure that we have the means to actually fund it in some way.
And how this works, just to give you kind of an idea, we apply for the whole total, we do drawdown, so they hold that money, we do, once a product, something's complete within the project, we do a drawdown, and then they reimburse us, so we front the money at the beginning, they reimburse us, like, quickly, I mean, within a month. And then we only, so that way we are only using what we spend, so we don't have to use the total loan, if that makes sense.
Did, did you guys get the feeling that one of the things they were interested in is what our sewer rates are going to be?
Yes, I did.
I think they were worried about if that's the only route we were going, that it was going to be very costly.
Well, I got the feeling that they wanted almost something eventually in writing that what it would be.
And we've done that in the past, so you'll tear that out.
We prepared for it, but.
Yeah, but they, they got the money, that's why they want to.
Yeah.
And we kind of talked about it afterwards. I think the way to satisfy them is to not just pass our rates yearly, that we need to have a plan. So years ago, we did an ordinance that said, here's our rates this year, and here's going to be our increases over the next X number of years. And that way, you know, that way it's out there, the public knows, there's no surprises, and it satisfies them that we have a plan.
That separation between KDHE and citizens, right, they've got enough.
Yeah.
Prepare.
So to get to the end of January, Kramer's basically got to do what Kramer's got to do for the next three weeks or so. And then they'll meet with you guys and discuss what, meet with some of us and discuss what their plan was there. And then we'll come up to the council and share that plan, and then come up with a plan by the end of January to get back to KDHE, is that kind of the rough timeline?
Yeah.
Yep, hopefully we can talk and discuss with you guys and kind of make a plan before the end of January.
So this sales tax that you brought up, that's an option too, that we need to be thinking about. And.
I'm just waiting to see it.
And, yeah, and Joe brought up something today too, that, you know, if we show the public that we do need a sales tax, but we also are going to cut some of our things in our budget to try to make it work too, you know, that we're putting in effort. I mean, you know, we really need to.
A fact sheet of some type that tells them, you know, here's, we've got, I mean, I hate to say we got the best. We got, I mean, it's going to cost us money. Where do you want it to come from? Because if you don't want any of this, then you could do the regional thing, and your rates would be whatever. And so, you know, here's, do you want it? You know, they probably don't want to have a big sewer increase, and they probably don't want a big mill, you know, at two mills or whatever. I don't know what it'd be. Don't quote that, because I don't know what it is, but it'd be on property taxes and those two. Those two things they don't, you know, I mean, the sales tax might be the most palatable, the best worst option, I think.
Yeah, bother me, there's nothing but you, wait, see what comes.
Right, talk to Kramer, we really can't do anything to talk to Kramer. We just.
If we're gonna, if we think on down the road we're going to sales tax, we do, we need to.
If we want to do a sales tax this spring, they have to know by the end of this year, whether we're going to do it or not.
By the end of December?
By the end of December.
That wouldn't be until the spring.
That would be for the spring, the county.
Thank you.
Okay.
But truly, I think, I think if we want something to pass, we wouldn't want it to go in the spring. We were, you know, because people go out that are for it, and not as many people go out that are against. Some will, some will, but some will just not put out.
Preface it.
Then we're.
I don't know how to say that in civilian terms.
Then we can put it on the next election.
Let them know that something may be coming, let the county know, hey, we're looking at this as a possibility. Do we have to say for sure by the end of the year?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to, and we need to get prices from them as well.
Okay.
So we will have, we'll have the states report back in about three weeks. So we'll have a pretty good idea then of where we sit on financing.
Probably, but maybe the second meeting in December. So that last meeting in December, we're gonna have to.
We're gonna do some work.
We did ours.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Anything else that the council wants on this? I mean, I've tried to provide my funding strategies and.
Alright, based on what they give you, you'll talk about what the sewer rates would be?
Yes.
You'll do, okay, alright.
Yeah. Pretend my cell was barely ready when I was there.
Pretend?
That's what I said, administrator.
Will do.
Game, you have, Joe?
Um, no, I don't think so. Oh, we do, yeah, one thing, we do have a, we have an opening for a police officer. Ashlyn Ferguson has submitted resignation, so we have posted that on Indeed and social media. Probably do a paper ad, so.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the question.
Yes.
Cody, don't get mad at me. But, okay, you know, one of those things that we added, did we add when we thought the hospital was coming in?
No.
I don't think so.
I thought that was one of the things we talked about, we had one opening and we had two good candidates.
Coming down the pipeline, we hired both of them.
And we hired both, and we had one, and we had two good candidates, and we hired both. And if that's not, if that's not something we, but I mean, those are the types of things when you start talking about, I mean, not just, huh, just, just talking. So if that's not what we did, then it's okay.
Yeah, we opened two, yeah, we opened two positions, it was officer safety issue. We needed two officers on the street at the same time, so we had two officers every day.
Why, in all seriousness, I'm sitting there one time thinking, we had one opening, but we had two good candidates and we hired both of them.
That was a.
That was dispatch.
Was that?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
We discussed, we discussed hiring one, two, three extra in the coming years.
Place and fire.
Right.
I hired one officer, and we had two good applications, and we hired both because of the hospital in the home development.
Yeah, that's not.
That's the way I remember.
I remember talking about needing them there. Okay, someone look that up.
That's okay.
Like, let's find it.
I mean, that's just an example of, when we're talking about that stuff, it's not pleasant. It's not pleasant, right?
That's all, ma'am.
Thank you, John. Council member comments, Mark?
I appreciated John saying pretend.
I.
Joe?